Good evening councillors, family and friends of councillors, officers, members of the public in attendance and our viewers on livestream. I declare this meeting open at 6:10pm. My name is Peter Smith, I am the Chief Executive Officer here at the City of Darabin. I would like to begin by acknowledging the Warrong-Jerry Warong people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land we now call Darabin and I pay our respects to their elders, past and present. Council pays respect to all other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities in Darabin, recognises and pays tribute to the diverse culture, resilience and heritage of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. We acknowledge the leadership of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities and the right to self-determination in the spirit of mutual understanding and respect. Before this meeting of the council starts, I would like to invite Colin Hunter, Junior Junior, representing the Warrong-Jerry people, to commence the evening with a welcome from the traditional owners of the land on which we meet tonight. Thank you Colin.
Thank you very much. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. It is an honour and a privilege to be here this afternoon. My name is Colin Hunter IV. I would like to start off with acknowledging that this evening we are run Wurundjeri country, home of my ancestors and also home to everybody here today. I would also like to pay my respects to both elders past, present and emerging, elders from all nations, especially all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community members here this afternoon. Wurundjeri is a part of the Coolang nation and of the Warrong language group. Wurundjeri country extends from the inner city of Melbourne across to the Great Dividing Range, west to the Warrabee River, south to the Maudially Creek and east to Mount Borbor. A big thank you to everybody who has helped make this event possible this evening. Wurmanjekka, welcome and enjoy your evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you Colin for that warm welcome. In accordance with Section 25.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary Chair of this meeting until the election of the Mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting and that they feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight's a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing Mayor and Deputy Mayor and welcome the new Mayor and Deputy. I'll go to item two, councillors' apologies. There have been no apologies received for tonight's meeting. And item three, I'll just check, are there any declarations of conflicts of interest that councillors would like to make? Thank you. There are none. I will now invite councillor Williams to reflect on her time as Mayor over the last 12 months. Thank you councillor Williams.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge the Warrong-Jerry-Warong people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land that we now call Darabin. Darabin recognises and celebrates the diverse cultures, resilience and traditions of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. First Nations Indigenous people value the land and maintain a deep and ongoing spiritual connection to it. I respect the wisdom and knowledge of elders past, present and emerging and any staff that may be here with us this evening. Darabin is a home of 160,000 people, one of the largest populations of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people. People from all different diverse cultures, backgrounds, ages, abilities, sexualities and gender identities. Sharing those different perspectives, stories and experiences all contribute to our community's rich heritage and character. Darabin is a leader in climate action and we thrive on tackling and protecting biodiversity on and this planet. One year ago, I was elected as your Mayor. I pledged to represent the whole community and I have done so by treating everyone equally. During this time, I've learnt a lot, shown my vulnerability, been genuine and because of this, I have grown as an individual. During my time as Mayor, I've established so many connections, exchanged ideas and engaged in fruitful discussions. I've had the privilege of meeting with MPs, Senators to address critical issues that impact the lives of Darabin residents. I have advocated for you on topics like the cost of living, housing concerns, climate change, our refugee community, tackling homelessness, improving transport infrastructure and starting to work for additional funding for transformative projects that will shape our city for the future. I have gained support from La Trobe University, the Reservoir Revitalisation Board, the Northern Council Alliance, the M9 Group and other local councils and I have worked collaboratively towards allocating funds to initiate the scoping, not just for Reservoir Leisure Centre but its comprehensive connectivity to universities, major employment incentives and the broader community. I've championed to try and get the extension of the 86 tram route to accommodate the growing population in Melbourne's north, ensuring accessibility transport for La Trobe University, Northern and Austin Hospital, Northland Shopping Centre and Preston Market. For that alone, there's 37,000 people spanning across education, research, health and retail. It's been an honour and a privilege to have attended many events and seen many projects come to fruition such as the Intercultural Centre, East Reservoir Family Centre, sports lighting projects such as J E Moore, G H Mott, I W Dole and J C Donathan Reserves. The Town Hall Avenue Housing Project is another big one, welcoming the Jamaica Women's World Soccer Team and of course, most recently, the Northgate Aquatic and Recreation Centre. My greatest joy for me as a Mayor has been to hear the stories of migrants that have travelled across the world to call our city home. I'm so proud to have been able to hand out over 1,258 Australian citizenships to date. And there has been many continuing advocacy for the Preston Market. The market has faced several challenges in recent years, including the possibility of closing. Preston Market holds immense value for the Darabin community and the residents of northern Melbourne. The market provides employment, opportunities and most importantly, offers fresh affordable produce to the entire community, not just here in Darabin but the outskirts of Darabin. So I was very pleased to hear the recent news of the traders being offered a five-year lease so we can continue to enjoy the market for many more years to come. I'm proud to, of all, to contribute over the last 11 years that I've been on council and as a councillor, I've been able to make Darabin a more inclusive place, no matter what your ability is. I was the first person to initiate the giant hanging swings installed at playgrounds to ensure children with a disability were included. I introduced sensory-friendly and non-toxic plants in public spaces and promoted to introduce a toy library in Darabin and established family-friendly library spaces as my child thought libraries thought was a place where they could do hide and seek. I advocated for the provision of tranquil areas and dedicated hours at shopping centres to accommodate for people with special needs. Northland was one of those first. I created more disability and disabled parking and make our community a place where buildings were more accessible and friendly. I championed the building of a new animal facility and tripled the amount of funding and introduced action plans in tackling graffiti. I am only one of nine councillors and these decisions have been made collectively, not just on my own. I am proud to have led this dedicated team of councillors and I would like to express my gratitude to you all and the hard-working staff at council and there are many, including officers, health and support workers and employees who are really committed to ensuring the safety and wellbeing of our community. One of the most rewarding aspects of my job as a Mayor has been seeing the results of our collective efforts together. I would personally like to express my sincere gratitude to two particularly outstanding people, my godfather Bernie Geary and Anne Liamoth, a long-term resident of Darabin. Both have had a profound impact and mentoring me, encouraging me to run for the local election. If it were not for them both, I would not be a councillor here today. Also, a big shout out to Keith Coffey, who has attended nearly every council meeting for the last 50 years here at Darabin. And to my family, Michael, Jessie, Ella and of course, my dog Twilight for their unwavering support throughout this journey. There are countless amazing people who I have not mentioned that believed in me, encouraged and supported me and who have had a huge impact on who I am today. So thank you, thank you and thank you. I also would like to express my sincere gratitude to the unsung heroes who play a vital role in improving people's lives and for their efforts in shaping Darabin, which is close to my heart and I'm forever grateful. I would like to thank my Deputy Mayor Suzanne Newton for her ongoing support. She has been inspirational to other women who are thinking about running in the upcoming election but that who has also been juggling her day job and being a mother for the first time. And of course, being the Mayor also comes with its challenges. There are times when tough decisions are made and not everyone will agree with them but even with those moments, I am grateful for the opportunity to have been helped steer our community in the right direction. I just want to say that being the Mayor has been a true privilege and I feel grateful every day for having that opportunity to serve this great city and I hope that every person feels valued and included, whatever their background is, living here in Darabin. The diversity and inclusiveness here in Darabin as well as our staff are our greatest strength. The invaluable efforts of people from a variety of backgrounds and all corners of our municipality make Darabin a place I look forward to continuing to work with because when we collaboratively work together, it makes our community an even better place to work, live and play. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Williams. I'd also like to acknowledge your leadership of the council and our community over the past year. As the CEO, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you. Councillor Williams, you've worked incredibly hard on behalf of council and our community. You've demonstrated passionate and empathetic leadership through some pretty complex problem-solving challenges and lots of triumphs over the past year. During your time as Mayor, council has delivered on many meaningful pieces of work which will continue to benefit all of our diverse community well into the future. Thank you. I will now invite councillor Newton to reflect on her time as Deputy Mayor over the last 12 months. Thank you councillor Newton.
Thank you Peter. I'll sit for obvious reasons. I really just want to focus on saying a huge well done to Julie for your last 12 months as Mayor. It's been a wonderful experience being Deputy to you. When I became Deputy this time, I had a one-month-old, I've now got a 13-month-old and I really, really appreciate how supportive you were to me during that time. You had a lot of lessons for me from your time with your two kids and I can't thank you enough. In the 12 months, we had a new CEO and I think Julie as Mayor did a really wonderful job of ushering Peter into the organisation. I know that obviously Julie and I at times were definitely on other sides of decisions but I always felt respected and I really appreciated the way that you chaired with a fair and firm chairing style. I think it was wonderful. Lastly, you know, I think that one of our roles as councillors is to leave things better than when you found it and I can say hand on heart that as Mayor, you left Darabin better than when you found it. So I appreciate you, thank you.
I'd also like to acknowledge councillor Newton's contribution in the role of Deputy Mayor over the past year. Councillor Newton, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you as well as the Mayor. I want to thank you for your hard work, constant community focus as an advocate for the people of Darabin. I believe your work as Deputy Mayor has made a real impact and you've contributed to making Darabin a better, more equitable and sustainable place and I'm sure you will continue to support our vibrant community to flourish. Thank you very much. I believe it's customary at this time just to spend a few minutes to ask if any other councillors would like to say a few words of thanks to the Mayor or Deputy Mayor. Please, please take this minute if you'd like to do so.
I might just jump up if that's okay. I just wanted to congratulate councillor Williams and councillor Newton for their work over the past 12 months, their collaboration. It's been great to see two wonderful councillors leading together and I think councillor Williams, having the experience of being on council with you over the last 11 years and watching you grow in your role as councillor, it's been wonderful to see you in the role of Mayor over the past 12 months. So congratulations on a big year and I think you should feel really proud about the past 12 months and what you've done for the city but I think also to support us as a group of councillors as well. So thank you.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Is any other councillor to speak? Councillor Lawrence, thank you.
Yes, thank you CEO Peter Smith. Yes, I'd like to congratulate Julie, councillor Julie Williams, as the Mayor of Darabin on an incredible 12 months. I'm not sure if people have watched the energy that has been applied to this place and of course, congratulate councillor Suzanne Newton as a Deputy Mayor who was part of the team and took up the challenge with our new CEO to really bring home some huge projects to the city and set in the planning for both the economic, social and environmental sustainability of this city. And we have just brought in our largest budget ever and we have had to also look at some very strong financial adjustments so that future generations in this city will continue to be a vibrant, multicultural, sustainable city, progressive city that it always has been. So congratulations on the work and I'm sure the hard-working council staff here know the work that was put in by the leadership team but perhaps people at home who are in now various silos at home don't actually appreciate the amount of sacrifice that people have to give to provide community leadership. So thank you Julie and thank you Suzanne.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. No other councillors wish to speak, I will move to agenda item 4.2. Councillors, this is term of the Office of Mayor where we are, I believe you have it in your agendas, just check the recommendation is up there. So this is to determine the term of the Office of Mayor and I'm looking for a mover to elect the Mayor for a term of one year. Thank you councillor McCarthy, do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Lawrence. Councillor McCarthy is moving, do you wish to speak to the motion? No, councillor Lawrence. Does anyone else wish to speak for or against the motion? No, well I will put the motion to the vote, all in favour of that please. Thank you, that's carried unanimously. Councillors, we are waiting on councillor Messina, I'm going to adjourn for five minutes and I will reconvene this meeting, I'm actually going to do it at 20 to 7 just to give, she is like two minutes away, but I'll just give her time to settle and gain her seat. So we'll adjourn for actually 10 minutes and we'll start again at 20 to 7 for those watching online. Line of comeback, thank you. Moving on to item 4.3, the election of the Mayor. Before I call for nominations to the position of Mayor, I'd like to outline the process for nomination and election of the Mayor. The election of the Mayor will be conducted in accordance with the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules. Firstly, I'll call for nominations and any councillor that is in attendance tonight is able to nominate any councillor for the Office of Mayor, all councillors can nominate themselves. The nomination must be seconded and the candidate must consent to their nomination. There's no opportunity to speak for or against nominations. To be elected as Mayor, a candidate must receive the vote of an absolute majority of the council, that is at least five votes as we have nine councillors. Once all nominations are received and I move to the election, no further nominations can be made. In terms of the election process, if there is only one nomination, I will declare that council duly elected as Mayor. If there is more than one nomination received, a vote will be taken to elect one of the candidates. If this is required, voting will be undertaken by a show of hands for each nominee after I read out their name. Councillors in attendance must vote for one of the candidates. If one candidate receives an absolute majority of the votes, that is five or more votes, I will declare that councillor elected. If no candidate receives an absolute majority of votes, the candidate with the least number of votes will be defeated and I will then ask councillors to vote again for the remaining candidates and again if necessary until one councillor has an absolute majority of votes. In the event that an absolute majority cannot be achieved after three rounds of voting, the meeting will be adjourned to a later specified time and date and if after conducting three new election processes, an absolute majority cannot be achieved, the election of the Mayor will be determined by lot. If this is required, I will explain the process that will follow. So we'll begin the election processes. Councillors, are there any nominations for the Office of the Mayor for the 2324 council year? Councillor Rennie?
I would like to nominate councillor Newton.
I'll just get a second for that. Councillor McCarthy, councillor Newton, you accept that nomination? Thank you.
Yes, I do.
Are there any further nominations? Councillor Williams?
I would like to nominate councillor Greco.
Councillor Greco, can I just have a second for that? So second, councillor Messina. Councillor Greco, do you accept that nomination? Thank you. Are there any further nominations? As there are no further nominations, I will move to the election process. I'll just check my notes, so I do this right. So I have received nominations for councillor Newton and councillor Greco and I'll now call for votes in the order of nomination. Those voting for councillor Newton, please raise your hand. So that's, that's five votes, thank you. That is five votes for councillor Newton. Those voting for councillor Greco, I'll do this anyway, please raise your hands. That's four votes for councillor Greco. As an absolute majority has been achieved, I'll just check that with government. In accordance, governance, correct? In accordance with council's governance rules, it is my honour to declare that councillor Newton has received an absolute majority of votes and has been elected as Mayor of the City of Darabin for the 2324 year. Congratulations. I think councillor Newton are going to ask you to put the robe on if you would. I'll just give you a minute to do that. Councillor Newton, I now invite you as Mayor to assume the Chair. So from here, Mayor, I invite you to do your acceptance speech and then other councillors may want to say a few words. So from here, mayor, I invite you to do your acceptance speech and then other councillors may want to say a few words of congratulations before we move to the election of deputy mayor.
Thank you everyone, I could not be more proud to stand or sit in front of you as the twenty-eighth mayor of Darabin tonight. When you've been deputy mayor three times, you do wonder if you'll always be the bridesmaid and never the bride. I'm very grateful to my colleagues for putting your faith in me tonight, as a first among equals. I'd first like to acknowledge what meaning on the lands of the Warandur people of the Kulin nation. I pay my respects to their elders past and present and to any Aboriginal people and Torres Strait Islander people in the room. I acknowledge that this land was stolen and never ceded. I'm living on this land because my ancestors migrated here from England, Ireland and Scotland between seventeen eighty-eight, the first fleet, and the hundred years after that. With convicts and free settlers on both sides of my family, I acknowledge the role they must have played in the dispossession of Aboriginal people from their lands and their culture. And that the privileges I enjoy are predicated on this dispossession. This is why first and foremost as mayor, I will heed the call of the Darabin Aboriginal Advisory Committee, our Black Lives Matter statement. To quote, "Join in with a sense of urgency, determination, the fight against injustice, racism, inequality and discrimination", end quote. I'm committed to our community vision for twenty forty-one, which in part reads Darabin respects and supports First Nations people, values country, our diverse communities and places. Seven generations after Anne Forbes was transported to Australia for stealing fabric, I was born to Alan, who worked for Australia Post for almost forty years, and Eleanor, a home maker. You do have to develop a thick skin in local politics and my resilience comes from my mother, who's here today, who survived a horse riding accident at fifteen. Where she was in a coma for a month and not expected to walk again. She's gone on to live a full and rich life with two children and one much-loved grandchild Bryn. I also acknowledge the resilience of my grandfather Kich Lufnan, who survived being a prisoner of war in World War Two in Japan and on the Burma line. Including being one of only ninety-one survivors out of thirteen hundred prisoners on a Japan-bound ship struck by an American torpedo. Lastly, I honour my namesake Susan Martha Rainsford, the matriarch who brought our family out from Ireland. I didn't grow up in Darabin, it's rather my chosen home. Growing up, living in the eastern suburbs, we would come to this side of town to go to the Coburg Drive-In, which I loved. My dad would tell me to sit down in the back seat so he could say I was under twelve and hence I would get a free kids ticket until I was well into my teens. My first proper experience of Darabin was working at Northgate Library in my twenties and doing shifts at Fairfield, Preston and Reservoir libraries. Back then, I remember riding my bike from Northgate to Preston Library and seeing a lot of the bars and cafes petering out somewhere in Thornbury. It's been incredible to see the way new local businesses have made their way north in the fifteen years since. Creating this incredible mix of old and new with vibrant strip shopping and hospitality throughout the entire city. I have a deep respect for council's frontline staff who work to make our communities' lives better every day. I've rented in chairhouses across Darabin and Northgate, Preston and Reservoir, notably a crumbling falling down terrace in Walk Street, Northgate. I know what it's like to be on Centrelink benefits while unemployed and the humiliation of having to jump through hoops just to receive an allowance you can barely live on. I bought my first apartment in Darabin when I was thirty, excited about the restaurants and cafes nearby at the Mill Street shops and being on a tram line direct to the city. I didn't give a second thought to the fact that it was close to Mary Creek, but years later in COVID, having Mary Creek minutes down the road in lockdown was my saving grace. Being immersed in nature for that one hour of the day was the only thing that made me feel alive and human during months and months of Groundhog Day. Now at forty-one, I live with my partner Liam and thirteen-month-old son Bryn and couldn't ask for a better place to raise my son. I acknowledge Liam, who is here tonight, who has been an incredible parent, taking the first six months off after Bryn was born to be a full-time parent, which allowed me to be deputy mayor last year. I'm often asked how I got into politics and it was a long journey. I don't remember anyone suggesting politics as a career when I was in school, it wasn't seen as something that women did. Thankfully, this is changing with things, with programmes such as Pathways to Politics for Women, which helped me immensely when I first ran for council in twenty sixteen. A turning point happened for me ten years ago when I worked for Burundara Council. I joined the union and they needed people to be on the bargaining table for the upcoming enterprise agreements. I was told in no uncertain terms, it would be bad for my career if I joined the bargaining committee. I joined anyway. That experience gave me an early indication in power, politics and how things really work and I've been active in unions over since. I'm grateful to our organizer David Nuns, who taught me the concept, the concept of a leader who creates other leaders. It wasn't bad for my career, it was the start of my political journey. Today, I'm a proud ASU member and union delegate for my workplace at MSI Asia-Pacific. I know there are union members here in the audience tonight and I thank you for showing up to support the amazing workers of Darabin who do so much for our community. I've been a feminist for a long time and the values closest to my heart are equality and fairness. Working towards gender equality took me to UN Women in Kenya and Uganda for a year. Where I worked with female politicians who were strong, smart and had the grace and humour you need to survive in politics. Uganda had a quota of forty percent women MPs, which was far higher than Australia's percentage of women MPs at the time. When I returned to Australia, I put my hat in the ring to run for council with the aim of getting more women elected to council, which we achieved. I ran in the north of Darabin and was told I didn't have a chance of being elected. I spent months going door-to-door, finding out what was important to people and they told me and gave me their trust with their vote. I was elected against the odds seven years ago. Reach and gender equality is still incredibly important to me and fighting for fairness and equality shapes my life's work. We've been through so much as a city in that seven years. We led the world with our climate emergency declaration in twenty sixteen. We led the nation by no longer celebrating on twenty-sixth of January. We led this state by driving a project where forty-six councils Victoria-wide moved to renewable energy. We continue to lead on climate and last week opened Australia's first indoor-outdoor gas-free aquatic centre in Northgate. We've all lived through COVID and the most intense restrictions on our daily lives. We've come out the other side only to face new challenges. The climate crisis continues to escalate with temperature records broken and extreme weather events becoming more frequent. We're still feeling the effects of the inequality crisis and cost of living pressures. I saw last week that residents are living in caravans and in swags at Edwards Lake Park. We know demand for food relief is going up as more of our residents are having to choose between buying food and paying bills. We know everyone is feeling the pressure when we buy fresh food, when our interest rate goes up, when our rent rises, when our utility bills arrive. We're in a housing crisis and we want to work with the state government to ensure Darabin has enough quality housing for all who need it. Affordable housing with inclusion zoning, social housing, homelessness services. Crucially, we need the state government to increase public housing in Darabin to address the growing Victorian weight list of public housing of sixty-five thousand people. Where will the residents of the Home Street Tower go where their home is demolished? Some of Darabin's most esteemed residents have lived in public housing. The musician Archie wrote, she wrote some of his iconic songs in the Spring Street walk-ups and Uncle Jack Charles. We're in an escalating climate crisis and next year, we will release our new climate emergency plan to achieve zero greenhouse gas emissions for Darabin by twenty thirty. We need to electrify everything and we need everyone in our community on board. Our twenty forty-one community vision is crystal clear on where we need to go. Darabin commits to mitigating the climate emergency, creating prosperity for current and future generations. We're a strong, proud and diverse community that welcomes people from all backgrounds. Our diversity is our greatest strength. Again, our community vision for twenty forty-one could not be clearer. Darabin is an equitable, vibrant and connected community. Sixty percent of us have at least one parent born overseas, including my partner and son. And we come from every corner of the globe to make Darabin our chosen home. We have different abilities, backgrounds, sexuality and genders and we all belong here. Our beloved Preston market is the living, breathing heart of this diversity and we all breathed a sigh of relief when the traders were given five-year leases recently. We faced challenges at Darabin council too. We had a monitor appointed to Darabin in twenty twenty-two, who gave councillors strong and clear advice about where we needed to improve. Like most households, we had to tighten our belts. We need to make sure we're getting the basics right and focusing on the things that matter to our community. So we can have the social licence to take the bold, progressive stances on the things we care about deeply. We need to work together to ensure our customer satisfaction survey results improve. I know we can do it together. Now is the time for us to pull together as a council and a community in the last year of our four-year term. To finish what we've started, deliver on our council plan and put us in the best position we can to hand over to the new councillors at the end of twenty twenty-four. Almost done. This year I did the Williamson Community Leadership Programme where I learnt so much. A concept we learnt about that I love is seventh generation decision-making. The seventh generation principle is that any time someone makes a decision, they should think about the impact seven generations into the future. I want us to do this in our decision-making. Will the decisions we make now create a sustainable future, not just for our children but for our descendants in two hundred years' time? Another key learning was from Leadership Victoria leader and resident Chris Koter, who taught us to think about decision-making in terms of what would better look like. In our group work in Williamson, the question we sought the answer to was, how might, how might we recalibrate work so caring more being is valued and in harmony? For me, that means my gorgeous son will come with me to lots of council events and we will travel there by e-bike. Councillors, staff and community members, there is no better time to build the future we want and to create a Darabin. Where everyone has what they need to thrive within twenty minutes of home. Finally, I'd like to thank two people who've been with me since the start of this journey in twenty sixteen. Christine Banks, hello, and Angie Feisker. I would not be here today without your unwavering support, frank and fierce advice and friendship, I cannot thank you both enough. Here's to a wonderful last year of our four-year term, thank you again for putting your faith in me. Thanks.
Through you mayor, I think it's custom again, if any councillors want to say a quick word of congratulations now, there's opportunity to do that. I'm doing that because, thank you councillor Rennie.
Thank you, I'll keep it brief. I think anyone who heard that speech would know why I nominated councillor Newton, mayor Newton for the role. That was an outstanding speech and conveyed, I think, an incredible vision. I had the absolute pleasure of working very closely with Suzanne for two years when I was mayor and Suzanne was deputy. And I could not have worked with a better deputy mayor. And I could not be happier tonight to stand here and see you as mayor because it is so well deserved. I think you are the hardest-working deputy. Julie, councillor Williams has outlined that. And I know that you will be not only the hardest-working mayor, but a visionary mayor who cares deeply about this community. And who will work with all of us and with your team to make the very best of the next year.
Councillor Hannon? I'm going to hand bat the chair very quickly, but just for this bit.
Just a few words, firstly, a very sincere thank you to our outgoing mayor Julie Williams. You've done a wonderful job over the last twelve months. And as you said, you've really gone to great lengths to act fairly, work with all councillors, often under great pressure. And it's a really long list of achievements that you've noted there during this time, so we're very grateful for that, thank you. And of course, big congratulations to our new mayor Suzanne Newton. It's been amazing working with you as a councillor myself for the last three years and I've learnt so much from you. You have a calm determination and have shown great leadership and integrity during that time as deputy in support of our mayor. You bring, as you said, a great passion for the environment, especially active transport and really walk the talk or actually ride the talk. Getting around town on the e-bike with your little one. You're equally committed to supporting First People's self-determination, proud unionist, feminist, lover of arts and culture. Advocate for addressing disadvantage within our community and globally. And promoting equity and rights for people of all genders, sexualities, cultures, abilities and backgrounds. You've worked tirelessly within council and in various other forums, outside council, including the Victorian Local Government Association to develop your skills and experiences. I know you'll do a fantastic job as mayor and I'm looking forward to working with you and together with all councillors for the next year.
Any other councillor, otherwise I'm going to hand, or councillor McCarthy?
Keep it really brief, councillor Hannon stole everything that I wanted to say, so I'll just second everything that he said. But on a personal note, mayor Newton, it's such a joy to say those words. I've had the privilege and it is a privilege to see your evolution as a, from an activist on so many issues. To then becoming a councillor and now of course to taking on this really important leadership role. But I, I don't think it's a huge step for you to be honest, because you've been playing such an important leadership role on this council for the past seven years. Both officially as deputy mayor, but I think also unofficially, just as someone who has always kept what is important about being a councillor at the fore of your considerations. But I think also being a really important role model to others. And I know that there are many people in our community who recognise that. And I know that, that you are going to bring the very best to the role, but I think also you'll help inspire not just us as councillors. But I think also council staff and the broader community, so I want to congratulate you on this really important role that you're taking on. It is a great achievement, you are absolutely ready for this and we have your, you have our full support and I'm just incredibly proud of you tonight, thanks.
Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate mayor Newton on her election and also acknowledge the work that councillor Williams did in mentoring Suzanne. And also really setting in the background, the firm foundations for the governance and the finances of this city. As we come out of a very challenging economic situation for our workers, for our community and for our families. With interest rates and housing pressure and energy pressure through the roof. So I think we need to embrace change, we need to embrace many changes of ideas. To protect the most vulnerable and to create a future Darabin with a future of people. Who can hopefully look back and say, we put a foundation for a sustainable, just and inclusive, diverse community here. And a very dynamic and exciting community, so I'd just like to say that. And I would also like to say, it's important the apprenticeship you've done as a staff member here. As a struggling student, as a renter, as a flat owner, as then a home maker. And this is the intergenerational stories of this city.
Thank you very much councillor Lawrence.
Thank you, congratulations, mayor Newton. I know that we don't often see the eye-to-eye on many things, but we've worked really well together on many, many projects and it's really great watching you evolve into a leader. I look forward to working with you for the year and I know there's something that we're both deeply passionate about. And I've probably got the terminology incorrect, but it's energy poverty. I'm looking forward to this council raising that and addressing that in our municipality because it's something I'm deeply passionate about, equally as you are and equally as this council. So I look forward to how we develop that together as a united council for the year, thank you.
Congratulations, sorry, congratulations.
I'll respond to that councillor Messina, there was something I didn't put in my speech about. I heard recently about an energy company that was giving away electric blankets to people who couldn't afford to heat their homes. And I think it's just a perfect example of the solutions don't have to be costly, they have to be practical, so thank you very much. Shall we move on to the election of the deputy mayor? Great. So we have a recommendation that council in accordance with section twenty A of the Local Government Act 2020 and its governance rules. Maintains the position of deputy mayor for a term to coincide with the term of the mayor for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four council year. Is there a mover of motion to maintain the role of deputy mayor to coincide with the term of mayor for the twenty-three, twenty-four council year? Councillor Rennie, do I have a second? Councillor McCarthy, I saw your hand first. Okay, I've got a second. Does the mover wish to speak to the motion? Does the second wish to speak to the motion? Does anyone else wish to speak for or against the motion? No? I'll now put the motion to the vote, all those in favour, that's carried unanimously. We will move on to item 4.5, the election of the deputy mayor. So moving on to item 4.5, in accordance with council's governance rules, I will now conduct the election for deputy mayor. The process of the election of the deputy mayor is the same as that for the election of mayor and will be conducted in accordance with the Local Government Act 2020 and the council's governance rules. Councillors, are there any nominations for deputy mayor? Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you mayor, I'd like to nominate councillor Tim Lawrence for deputy mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do, mayor.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for the... Oh, sorry. And I need a second for that motion. Councillor Rennie, thank you. Are there any further nominations for the position of Deputy Mayor? Councillor Williams?
I'd like to nominate myself.
Councillor Williams, thank you. Is there a second for that motion? Councillor Greco, thank you. And councillor Williams, I assume you accept the nomination?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Are there any further nominations for the position of Deputy Mayor? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are two or more nominations. Thank you, councillors. I've received two nominations, being councillor Lawrence and councillor Williams. I will now call for votes in the order of nomination. Those voting for councillor Lawrence, please raise your hand. That is, I'll read it out, councillor McCarthy, councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Lawrence and councillor Newton. And those voting for councillor Williams, please raise your hand. That's councillor Dimitriades, councillor Messina, councillor Williams and councillor Greco. Thank you, councillors. The results of the election are councillor Lawrence, five votes; councillor Williams, four votes. So there is an absolute majority, and in accordance with council's governance rules 2020, I declare that councillor Lawrence has received an absolute majority of votes and has been duly elected as the Deputy Mayor of Darabin City Council for the 2023/24 council year. Congratulations, councillor Lawrence. And Deputy Mayor Lawrence, congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Newton. And I need to get practised and not...
It's going to happen.
...addressing the Mayor in the proper manner. Yes, thank you. I'm very humbled to be elected as Deputy Mayor, considering where I was about three years ago. So I do take it quite seriously that, as I said to you when you were elected Deputy Mayor, the CEO, the Mayor and the Deputy Mayor have a critical role in seeing through the vision and reconnecting with the values of our community, which are greatly shared by our community about equity, fairness, climate justice and economic justice and housing justice. So I look forward to particularly working on the housing crisis, which is, you know, just shocking, as you mentioned, people camping in Edwards Lake. We never thought we would see this 10 years ago. I saw it in Fitzroy, but I didn't think it would come all the way here. So that's something that we really need to seriously work on. Obviously, we've now got a financial plan put in place for economic sustainability responsibility, and it's a matter of being smarter, cleverer and working with our hard-working staff. And I should say, I'm an ex-ASU member, I'm a current CPSU member, and happy to see our pay rise flowing through this week myself, and I think everyone in Darabin deserves a fair pay rise. So it's going to be a challenging year, and I also know that I'm supporting nine individuals who are conviction activists, and I think that's important. We all have different specialities and life experiences we bring, and every individual in this council has an important part to play in sealing off and finishing off this term in a productive manner and an inclusive manner with our staff and our community. So I look forward to the next, is it 11 months? But yeah, it'll be, it'll go very fast, so congratulations.
I'd like to start by saying a few words of congratulations. Councillor Lawrence, or Deputy Mayor Lawrence, is our longest-serving councillor, so this is his sixth term on Darabin Council. I believe he's been there since almost the start, which is absolutely incredible. So the depth of knowledge and experience that you bring to the role is immense, and no one in this room can match that. So I'm so excited to work with you as Mayor and Deputy Team this year, and we spent four years together representing Latrobe Ward. We're now different wards, but I think we share the same passion and commitment to Darabin's north particularly, and I look forward to working with you on that over the next year. I believe that we share very clear values about housing, environment, unions and justice, and I'm looking forward to working with you very much. Thank you. Would anyone else like to say a few words? Councillor McCarthy, thanks.
Congratulations, Deputy Mayor Lawrence. And I think councillor Newton probably stole the thing that I wanted to say, actually, just then, which was the depth of knowledge and experience that you bring to this role. One of the things that I've really valued over the, I think it's now 15 years that we've spent on council together, which is extraordinary to say that because it's a long time, there are very few relationships that I've maintained over that period, and whilst we haven't always agreed on things, there are some core things that I know we share and hold dear. One of those is a word that we don't often use in this chamber, but I think it's really important to name it, which is localism, which is that focus on that what we do here matters, what we do here in our streets, in our parks, in our communities, in our workplaces, actually matters. And even if it doesn't change the world, it sets a standard that I think sometimes the world looks to. And we know in this city, and I just would acknowledge councillor Lawrence, has done work which it's easy, it's easy to kind of name it, but it's actually really important to recognise what it means. So in this city, we've had extraordinary work around housing, around poverty, around racism, around community forest, which became our urban forest strategy, and of course, really critical commitments, I think, to people who need a voice and deserve a voice in chambers such as this, but also chambers outside of this area. And councillor Lawrence, I'm really looking forward to your role this year, the support and mentorship that you can provide to other councillors, but I think also a team of councillors who both represent North of Bell Street, who can bring that vision to support, we know that investment in our community, but I think also that investment in people at the very grassroots level. And so I think you know the struggles that many people in our community face, you talk to them every day, and I think you'll bring that to the role as a Deputy Mayor, that grassroots commitment, but also the commitment to a bigger vision for our city. So congratulations.
Councillor Messina.
Thank you. Congratulations, Deputy Mayor Lawrence. When I first started as a councillor, I think I came to the first council meeting and I labelled you the wise one, and I think that's an example of what's been said tonight about yourself. Your passion for Reservoir and your passion for housing and your passion for people is what stands out to me. But most importantly is your voicemail, believe it or not. When you call councillor Lawrence's phone, he says, "Your community issues are important to me, but I can't come to the phone right now. Please leave your name and number after the beep." I think that just speaks echoes for who you are as a councillor, so I just wanted to mention that because I thought that was a gateway into the person that you are. So congratulations, councillor Lawrence.
Would anyone else like to say a few words? Okay, I think that's it. So we're now at item five, meeting closure. Thank you all for attending and your interest in tonight's council meeting. You are welcome to join us for some light refreshments in the Shire Hall. Councillors, can I ask you to please stay behind so we can take some official photographs before we join our guests? I declare this meeting closed at 7:08. Thank you, Bobby. And we're done. Thank you.